Time having arrived, I call this meeting of the Brockton School Committee February ninth of two thousand and twenty one to order. Due to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic and state of emergency on March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, Governor Baker issued an executive order temporarily suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL Chapter thirty A, Section twenty pursuant to that order. Public bodies are temporarily relieved from the open meeting laws requirement that meetings be held in public places openly and physically accessible to the public so long as measures are taken to ensure the public access to the body's deliberations through adequate alternative means. This meeting will be held and will be accessible to the public via Brockton Community Access, Brockton Public Schools website, www.bpsma.org, YouTube and Comcast Channel ninety-eight. The public can access this meeting via the link, www.youtube.com/thebrocktonchannels. I'll call the roll to establish a quorum. The mayor had a prior commitment tonight and sends his regards. The vice chair says here, Ms. Asak.
Here.
Mrs. Mendez.
Here.
Mr. Minicello.
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez, I believe also had a prior obligation. Mrs. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes, here.
Okay. We are a quorum. One second. One minute. Okay. You'll join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Of the United States of America.
Of America.
To the republic.
For which it stands. A nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Thank you. Okay. And do we, the first item on our agenda is the hearing of visitors. Do we have anybody who has signed up for the hearing of visitors that we know of? I don't think so, okay. Then we'll move on. And Superintendent Thomas, I believe we have a guest of honor with us this evening. If you want to introduce her and.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Augustino, for allowing me to take Elizabeth Doyle out of order, as you have read in reports sent to the school committee and then, you know, story in the enterprise and on our local news stations. Elizabeth Doyle is a fourth grade teacher at the Raymond School this past Friday during her Zoom class, and I'm going to actually let her tell you the story because obviously I wasn't there, so I don't want to, I won't do the story any justice. I'd like Elizabeth, thank you for being with us, and I want you to share the story with the school committee and everybody that's watching.
Thanks for having me. Well, Friday was kind of crazy. The kids were just coming back from lunch, so we had turned the Zoom on, and one of my students was saying that her fire alarm was going off, and we could hear it, but the kids all got so excited, so I had them mute themselves, so I could make sure, because a lot of times we hear the battery going off, that the alarm needs a new battery. But no, this was definitely the fire alarm, and I said to her, you know, do you see any smoke? Do you smell smoke? Do you see a fire? And she said she smelled smoke. So I said, you know, get everybody out of the house who's home, anyone home. She said, you know, she had people home. I said, you gotta get them out. And then I, I looked at everybody else, you know, I was focused on her, and then I looked at everybody else, and I saw that everyone's eyes were wide and their mouths were dropping, and I realized this was becoming traumatic, so I ended the Zoom and I picked up my phone and I called her and I called another phone, I called the fire department, and, you know, and they thankfully were there quickly, and then I was emailing my schools and emailing my principal, my guidance counselor, and everything worked out well. Teresa did an awesome job getting her family members out of the house. She's following directions, which was great, and everything worked out well. So, fire department went in and there was an incense stick that fell on clothing and fire, and the clothing went on fire in the basement, so.
Wow.
So again, just wanted to have Elizabeth with us so we could recognize her here tonight, and again, and Elizabeth and teachers across the district, the amazing job they're doing with not only remote learning, but dealing with situations that we've never been trained to deal with, because obviously we're in students, you know, virtually in students' homes every day. Thousands of students and teachers have done an amazing job, not only educating them, but, you know, when situations come up, making sure they're handled appropriately, making sure that if there's help needed, contact and police, fire, you know, staying in touch with the families, with the parents. So, again, Elizabeth, thank you for the amazing job you did on Friday, and you do every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, I definitely would like to also commend you and acknowledge, just like the superintendent said, I mean, in addition to being in this different learning environment, right, and now you're got the kids on Zoom and, you know, so in addition to all that comes with that, all those challenges that, you know, I know that the teachers have dealt with and done a wonderful job with, you're also trying to watch what's going on in everybody's environment around them, and many teachers like yourself have noticed things and caught things that have, you know, saved kids from harm and, and, you know, but then in the midst of trying to figure out what to do there, you've also had to notice what was going on with the other kids and make those snap decisions. I mean, so really appreciate it and glad to acknowledge the, you know, quick thinking and your ability to, you know, not only are you trying to help with that situation, that emergency, but also realizing, you know, what it's, the situation's doing to the rest of the class and deal with that at the same time. You know, incredible job and really, really commend you for what you did and what you do every day. I know some of the other members of the committee wanted to chime in, so I'll let them jump in. Mr. Sullivan is eagerly awaiting.
Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Doyle, I just wanted to thank you for your quick judgment and thinking real fast. I would say not only did you save the home and the personal property, you probably saved lives too. I just wanted to thank you, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If anybody else, you know, wanted to, if not, then again, you know, we really appreciate all your efforts, Mr. Minicello.
Thank you, Mr. DiAgostino. Well done, Elizabeth. Obviously, you have to be well aware of what's going on, and we certainly appreciate your quick thinking. I'm sure the other students were, I would say, scared or nervous, you know, and for their classmates, so I'm sure you did a great job calming them down as well, but, you know, kudos for you to be quick thinking and make sure that your student did the right thing under the circumstances, so well done.
Thank you. We did have a meeting when we came back onto Zoom. Like, the student who had the fire was messaging me after it was all over, saying, you know, open up the Zoom, I want to get back into class. So we started the Zoom and, you know, all the kids were, they had their time to check on her, see how she was doing, and then they shared their stories, and we had the guidance department there, and my vice principal was there, and it was good, and we talked about fire safety, so it ended up being a good learning experience. And then, you know, there was a student that, you know, didn't take it too seriously, and then I let them know, like, this was real, you know, and this could happen in anyone's house, and I definitely was concerned, though, I've been concerned with just getting the word out there about fire safety, which Brockton Public Schools does an awesome job with this in the health department, but I've noticed since spring, smoke detector beeps going off a lot. So just getting the word out there that they got to change the battery, like, this is, this is really important, so I wanted to say that it's really important, change the battery, because this smoke detector, it saved this family's life, you know, if that hadn't been going off, maybe all of this wouldn't have worked out this way, so.
Right, it was definitely a teachable moment. You know, the other thing that's even more dangerous is the carbon monoxide detectors, because you can't smell, that sneaks up on you and you, you, you know, you lose consciousness without even knowing something's happening, so that's a huge factor as well, but good job making it a teachable moment, and I just chuckled when you said, oh, she was ready to get back into class, and I'm like, okay.
She didn't want to be out. She said, she said, Ms. Doyle, open it up, I'm fine, let's go.
It's funny how you said that we're all immune to hearing those smoke detectors just chirping away in the background, you know, so, but, yeah, well, well done, and continue, continue to do a great job. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Thanks.
Great. So, again, thank you, Elizabeth, for being with us, and I also want to thank our partners with the Brockton Fire Department, because as soon as this happened, Deputy Chief Ed Williams called Dr. Cobb's to let us know, and the Brockton Fire Department has always been a great partner, and they do a great job coming in with our health classes, and they have for years, you know, doing fire prevention, safety education with our, with our young students, and again, we really appreciate their, their partnership, but also how quickly they responded to that student's home that day, so we want to thank them as well.
Definitely, and right after, after this happened, when we talked about fire safety, the kids were saying, we learned this in health class, we learned this in health class, so it's very good, it's an important part of school, I'm glad that our health department does this, and definitely this was an example of, this is really important, it's needed, and again, just get that message out there, change the battery, your smoke detectors, make sure they work, so, all right, well.
That's on a job well done.
All right, well, all right, so.
Thank you. Yes, you're all set.
All right, bye, everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right, and so we do have Dr. Herman with us this evening. Again, I'd like to ask if any member would be interested in making a motion to take him out of order?
Make a motion to take Dr. Herman now out of order.
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly second. Do I call a roll on this? Yeah, that's what I thought, all right. All right. So the vice chair says yes, Ms. Asak.
Yes.
Mrs. Mendez.
Yes.
Mr. Minicello.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez. Mrs. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
All right, Dr. Herman, thank you for joining us this evening, you're up.
Well, thanks for having me. I'll tell you, that was, that's going to be a tough act to follow. I come in week after week and give bad news, and it's really a pleasure to hear somebody giving such good news, appreciate everything that Ms. Doyle did. I'll go ahead and share my screen. And we can get started. With pandemic day number three hundred and thirty-three since March fourteenth of last year. So this is where we stand nationwide as of this afternoon, with nearly twenty-seven million cases, four hundred and sixty-three thousand plus deaths, and the red, yellow, green number for the country over the last seven days is thirty-three point five. Last, well, two weeks ago, when I was here in January twenty-sixth, the statewide number was fifty-seven point two, and as of today, that's now down to thirty-six point one. So we are headed in the right direction, which is good news for all of us. Likewise, in Brockton, I've extended this curve right up until yesterday, so these numbers down here will increase, they will increase as test results come back over the next few days, but they're not going to increase enough to change the direction of this curve, which is headed south, which is wonderful. So it's good to have a few weeks in a row where the curve is trending downward. Two weeks ago, this was our daily dashboard, our number was up to eighty-one, we had sixty-six patients in the hospital. Our dashboard tonight looks like this, so unfortunately, two more deaths were reported today, but our hospitalizations are down a bit, under fifty, and our red, yellow, green number today is down to fifty-one point nine. So again, trends headed in a, in a good direction. Likewise, our neighbors around us, now this is a little bit of old news, because this is the state's report that comes out on Thursday, so this is last Thursday's report for the two-week period leading up to the prior Saturday, so it is kind of from the end of January, but you can see virtually every town has dropped, and when the report comes out this Thursday, I think they were, they are all going to drop significantly. Again, everyone is in the red with the exception of our friends in Easton, and even they have a high number, and the only reason they skate and get a, a yellow designation instead of a red designation is because their testing rate is below five percent, and the reason their testing rate is below five percent is because the pool of testes is diluted by all of the college students at Stonehill who have come back and needed onboard testing, and they've increased their surveillance testing as well. So as you remember, so Easton falls into the yellow category, they've still got a number greater than ten, but because they had a test positivity rate less than five percent, they were in the yellow range. Hospitalizations also continue to fall in the city and are coming down to about that magic number of fifty, again, just to remember fifteen percent of the hospital beds, which in our city is fifty beds occupied by COVID patients, and now we're seeing that number drop below that, which is another good trend that things are heading in the right direction. Summary of pandemic to date, now all the cases by age group, so about fourteen hundred cases under the age of twenty. And this is what our test positivity rate is doing. This is courtesy of the Health Center, and their data is really up to date right through a couple of days ago, and you can see that for the last month, the test rate has been, positivity rate has been declining, declining, declining. We want it below five percent, but we'll take a declining test rate just as another indication that things are headed in a good direction. This is the weekly death toll, really since mid-December, we've been averaging between five and ten, kind of in that range, five and ten deaths per week, meaning we've got about, an average of about one person dying a day in the city of Brockton from COVID still right now. And this is what our red, yellow, green number has been doing. So last week, last Thursday, our number was sixty-two point three, and on this Thursday, when our number comes out, I think we're going to continue to see the drop, and my guess will be in the mid-sixties, I'm sixties and the mid-forties, so that the number is going to continue to go down, and hopefully will continue after that as well. So let's talk about the kids. Two weeks ago, when I was here, we talked and said our total number was one thousand forty confirmed cases, and when I say confirmed cases, that's a positive PCR test. There may be other probable cases as well, which are positive antigen tests, or people that develop symptoms after being exposed to somebody with COVID but never get tested at all, so even though the number was one thousand forty, certainly the number of cases is higher than that. In the last two weeks, we've added ninety-eight new kids for a total of eleven thirty-eight. No, we, the five hospitalized children were back early in the pandemic, no new hospitalized cases, no, no ICU cases, and no deaths in the pediatric age range. And this is just to kind of give you an overview of where the cases have occurred. You can see that really towards the end of the year, continued to climb, and thus far in February, through the first eight days, you know, the first week really in February, we've had thirty-five cases, so at this rate, at this clip, will really be probably less than what we were in November. So again, another indicator that things are falling off in all age ranges, and this is what it looks like, just as we look week to week to week for pediatric cases right through February sixth, and you can see we're heading in a good direction again. And just to break it down by a little bit more specific, what age ranges we have, and just to add up to age twenty-one, so see that in that young adult age group cases really do continue to peak quite a bit. This was two weeks ago, the numbers where we were, and just to kind of put it in perspective, as of today, my best guess of breaking it down by school age groups, so pre-K, elementary school, middle school, high school age kids. And I just wanted to say a word about the CTC, because I know sometimes some people have, when I, when they've heard me say CTC, they think I'm talking about the CDC, but this is the Community Tracing Collaborative, which is an arm of Partners in Health, which is contracted with the state to do the contact tracing, and so they do most of the contact tracing for the city of Brockton. And for example, this is last week's contact tracing, the three hundred and sixty-one cases that they followed up on, and you can kind of see, if you start at the bottom, a few are never reached or declined to talk to us. There are some cases who we can't identify any kind of cluster and don't know where they came from. A lot of cases said they got their COVID from a household contact, and they identified many clusters, which is two or more people who are getting the case in a particular setting. Most of those cases come from either close contacts or the workplace, and when it is the workplace, these are the various places, when it's a congregate setting, these are the various places. So again, as I've mentioned in the past, it really is quite all over the place. But this week with the CTC, I did, along with Linda Cahill, and I hope she's on the call, ask the CTC to see if we could break it down and drill down a little bit deeper on where the cases are coming from with kids, because I know we're all interested in where are these cases coming from. And obviously, the kids are not in school, so in the best efforts of the contact tracing, the Community Tracing Collaborative, is that two hundred and fifty of the kids got it from someone else in the household, sixty-eight got it from a close contact, so a friend or relative, or someone outside of the household. The biggest next group was unknown, and then a bunch of onesies and twosies from different, different settings, the K through twelve school, these are kids that live in Brockton, so have a Brockton address, but don't necessarily attend the public school system, and just to put it in perspective, just as the same exact data, but just to kind of, I think it's a better visual with, with the pie chart, just to see that the bulk of kids, most of the kids, three-quarters of the kids are getting it from someone else in their household, and then bring that up to, you know, close to eighty percent, if you add in close contacts as well. And the, the, the take-home message that I get from this is, is that when we do open up schools and kids return to schools, and I think the data is becoming more and more focused and clear, that the school itself is not necessarily the main spreader of COVID among school-age kids, it's going to be household contacts and close contacts, which is why when COVID is high in the community, students are at risk of getting COVID, not so much from their middle school French class as, as it will be from their brothers and sisters and moms and dads or grandparents who live in the, who live in the household. I did want to just share this data from Neighborhood Health Center, just as we're rolling out the vaccine, and I'm so happy that it's finally rolling out to the greater-than-seventy-five-year-old population, there still is a lot of vaccine hesitancy in within our community, especially based on ethnicity, there's a lot of vaccine hesitancy. This was just the staff that brought the Neighborhood Health Center, and who, who got the vaccine based on race, city of residence, and ethnicity, and you can see that there's a lot of pushback on vaccine, and they've rolled out some education programs there to try and help their staff. And I did want to also add a little, just a little note about the, the so-called variants of concern. So there, these are mutations from the standard coronavirus, and there's three of them that are of concern, there are major ones of concern, there are tons and tons others, but three major ones that are making the rounds, the so-called B one-one-seven, which is the UK variant, the B one-three-fifty-one, which is the South Africa variant, and the P one, which is Brazil. These last two have not really made the big inroads into the US yet, but the B one-one-seven variant, the UK variant, I did want to talk about, because it has arrived, and it's arrived in Massachusetts. We don't know how many cases for sure, we do know that seven have been identified, but it's likely far more than that, and we know that it is more infectious and more deadly, and it's spreading rapidly, doubling every ten days. The good news is that the current vaccines that are out there work well against the UK variant, unlike the South African variant and Brazil variant, where those lineages are not as sensitive to the current vaccines, there may, the vaccines may provide some protection, but certainly not as much protection as they provide against the UK variant. And so, you know, in the past, I've come before this committee and sort of been pessimistically thinking that this pandemic is going to stretch out through the summer and into next year, but with the swift rollout of the vaccine, as it's, even, even though there's fits and starts, and I know it's not as smooth as it could possibly be, but the fact that a million and a half people a day are getting a vaccine in this country, I am a lot more optimistic that as folks get vaccinated, if they choose to do so, that, you know, the, the pandemic has a, has a good chance of burning out as the summer continues on, and so I'm hopeful, I'm very hopeful that, that the, it'll still be here in the fall for sure, but I'm just very hopeful that it will continue to, the numbers will continue to go down and down as we approach next fall. And that's what I got, Mr. DiAgostino.
Thank you, Dr. Herman. As always, your reports are very informative and in-depth, and we appreciate all the work that, you know, that you're obviously putting into those for us. It's important information for us to, you know, have and keep on top of. On the, the variant that, and I forget where you said they were, that's not the UK variant.
It's a South African variant and a Brazilian variant, and none of those variants have been reported in Massachusetts yet, and in fact, the, the South African variant, I think, has only been in three states, and the Brazilian variant, only two states, so it's not widespread, but then again, we have not been as good as a lot of other countries in doing the surveillance testing that needs to be done to identify these lineages, these variants, and so I think the CDC now is ramping up that surveillance, so we should in coming weeks, I think, have a lot better handle on how quickly these variants appear and how bad they really are, and I'm just hoping that we can stay ahead of the, the spread of the variant. It's kind of right now a race between getting everyone vaccinated before the doubling times of these viruses.
Well, and that's, yeah, that's what I was kind of going to get to, I know that the current vaccines. Well, and that's, yeah, that's what I was kind of going to get to. I know that the current vaccines that are out there are effective on the UK. You said that. But these other variants, I mean, they, are they working on new vaccines? I mean, what are they?
Yeah. So the the FDA actually has a game plan. But surprisingly, they didn't call me and fill me in on the game plan, but they have a game plan to rapidly I ramp up to, you know, they can make these vaccines pretty quickly. I mean, it didn't take long. As a matter of fact, you know, they had kind of the genome overnight. So, you know, it's very possible they can identify an antibody against the new variant and make a vaccine a lot more quickly even than they did through the Operation Warp Speed. And I think that there may have to be you know, a ramp up of new vaccines that might be effective against against new viruses as the viruses kind of take hold and establish a footing. You know, wherever they establish a footing, but it it really is going to be a race of, you know, science versus virus, I I think. And it's anyone's guess. Everyone is hopeful that, you know, vaccine will win out over mutations, but we've all kind of seen and heard predictions from some pretty reputable sources that, you know, come the end of March, you know, this thing could take off again if if the new, if the new variants establish ground.
Right. Scary stuff to think about, you know, we're just nearing the end of one and then potentially facing the ramp up of another.
But I think things are looking, at least in the, you know, my my sense is that just because of the direction that things are heading, you know, without any new, you know, major holiday event, you know, obviously, I don't think the Super Bowl weekend is going to be on the same order of magnitude as a super spreader as Christmas and Thanksgiving war. But, you know, without some kind of holiday of that ilk around, even though we're all indoors and it's, you know, the dead of winter. I still think the trend is going to be over the next several weeks that the cases are going to be going down.
Hopefully, Ms. Asak, I believe you've had a
I forgot I have my hand up. Thank you, Dr. Herman. Actually, Dr. Herman had touched base on the variant that I had heard, you know, March. They're saying it's going to get a lot worse in March. And I've talked to a couple of people in the medical industry that have just been, you know, telling us just, you know, be prepared. We might have another wave of this come March, where some we expected. You know, I'm seeing a lot of people. So if you can just clarify this for me, so a lot of a lot of people that I know, if they've gotten the virus, they said they're fine for ninety days. They're fine. They're never going to get the virus. I mean, people are traveling. You know, you look and it just so many people that I know, and I haven't even been on a plane down to take a trip. This COVID has gotten to a lot of us, but is it true that if they've had COVID nineteen for ninety days that they're they're free, like they're not going to get the virus? Because a lot of people are under that impression and they're putting their guard down and pretty much thinking that they're good to go. So we do have, we do have our our spring break coming up. And a lot of families are traveling. Which is, and you know, the kids are going to be going back to school, that they're going to be starting back in school. So what are your thoughts on that, Dr. Herman? As far as can someone get it within the ninety days after having it?
So in general, that ninety day rule is kind of from the CDC guidance that says that once you've tested positive for COVID, then theoretically, the antibodies that you've developed have given you protection from the standard COVID strain for at least ninety days. And hopefully, it's much, much longer than that. But what that does is it sort of gets you out of any kind of testing that needs to be done. At least this has been the kind of standard recommendation before the variants have taken over. Don't forget, there is some evidence that says that even if you've gotten COVID, you still may be able to become infected with one of the variants of concern. Now, and it's not likely right now, just because the variants that are, you know, the big worrisome ones, the Brazil variant and you and South Africa variant are not really widespread as far as we know. So most folks that have had COVID theoretically are protected for at least for at least ninety days. So most of the testing programs, like a college testing program, for example, once you've had COVID, you're exempt from getting your, you know, weekly or twice weekly or whatever their in time interval is testing, that you don't have to do that for for at least ninety days because you're considered to be immune.
Okay. And we do have a lot of families that are going to be traveling. I mean, the majority of the people are, you know, following the strict, you know, guidelines as far as, you know, stay safe. Kids are going to be heading back to school, but there there are a lot of families that I know of that are traveling for break. So you know, I can pretty much see like an outbreak happening right after, right before we head back to
Yeah. And this has kind of been mirrored and echoed, you know, across the country on college campuses, you know, people took a break. You know, it's like they were on the cruise ship getting with their COVID. They did a shore excursion. You know, traveled to other areas of the country, picked up more COVID and brought it back to the college campus. And so we're seeing many college campuses, even even locally. Stone Hill, UMass, you know, have had to shut it down just because folks came back to college campus and, you know, spread the COVID that they picked up when they traveled. So yes, you know, large, you know, that's what happened Thanksgiving. That's what happened Christmas. And if there's going to be a huge migration for spring break, then so be it. That's why I know a lot of colleges have eliminated their spring break. You know, it's traditional, traditional spring break week. And instead of either, you know, shorten their semester or interspersed isolated days throughout the semester. But sure, I think, yeah, traveling is is risky. You know, you can make it safer, obviously, but it's, there's still, there's still risk involved.
Definitely. I know. I feel like I'm like the the COVID police. You know, it just, I I'm playing it safe and keeping my family safe. You can't control what adults do. But, you know, you just got to keep keep yourself safe. So the one thing, one observation I did make, I do get checked on a regular basis, given what I do for a living to keep myself safe and my clients safe, because I'm in and out of houses of people that I don't know in real estate. So the last time I went and got tested, I thought it was interesting. They usually just do a basic nasal swab. Now they're asking you to blow your nose to get it. I think we were probably getting a lot of false negatives with just the basic little nasal swab. So now you just blow your nose. And I think they said, you remember the brain poker? The brain poker test, that was probably the most accurate test. The little nasal swab ones, I don't think we're cutting it. So a lot of them are changing how they're doing the testing. I'm not sure if it was at one location, but it was something new that I hadn't run into. So I thought that was interesting, especially now with Massasoia reopening. I think they reopened tonight. I think today was their first opening. If everything went well, I'm not sure with the storm. So again, that would be interesting to see if our numbers are going to go up with Massasoia open as well. Given the amount of tests that they were doing on a daily basis.
Yeah, you know, I I'm looking at, I wish I'd brought that slide to share. The number of tests being performed in the city still is, you know, although not this week, it's it's dropped off this week, but it's really remained kind of in a thousand plus tests per week. So even with Massasoia closing, people found a way to get tested somewhere. I don't know. You know, where the, you know, whether it was the health center or other sites in Massachusetts or through the hospitals. But it the the drop off is not, in my opinion, the drop off is not because we've had less testing. I think it's real. Just, you know, based on all of those metrics coming down hospitalizations. You know, you know, hospitalizations represent a certain percentage of total number of patients with COVID. And so if the number of hospitalizations falls off, then you know the total number of patients with COVID is falling off as well. So there may be some effect of closing down Massasoia in not picking up some of the asymptomatic cases. But I don't think that that's a major player right now. I think COVID is really declining. And and the the testing, the the correct procedure for gathering a nasal swab is to blow your nose first. So within an hour of collecting the swab and then do just the front part of your nose, those nasopharyngeal swabs, the the long brain biopsy swabs are yeah, the brain pokers, nobody, nobody likes those. And they're really falling out of favor. Yeah. And the newer and the newer testing methods are are just virtually just as accurate as those brain pokers.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Fingers crossed. Hopefully, our numbers keep declining so we can safely get back. But thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Asak. Anybody else have any questions for the doctor, any comment? Okay. All right. Well, again, Dr. Herman, thank you so much for joining us and for your detailed report. And you know, we really appreciate you making time for us at least every other, if not every week sometimes. And we really appreciate that. We know you're a busy guy. So thank you.
My pleasure. Night, everyone.
Thank you, doctor.
Okay. So we still have, we have our consent agenda. The consent agenda is the bundling of routine school committee business that can be put together and bundled into one action. Any member of the committee has the right to request that an item be taken out of the consent agenda for discussion. So with that said, is there any member of the committee that has an item they'd like to take out of the consent agenda for discussion this evening? Mrs. Sullivan.
B, C, and D.
All right. Items B, C, and D. All right. And anybody else have an item they want to take out of the consent agenda? Right? If not, I would entertain a motion on items A, E, F, and G.
Motion to approve items A, E, F, and G.
Second. All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve item, the consent agenda items A, E, F, and G made by Mr. Minicello, seconded by Mr. Sullivan. Call the roll. Mayor Sullivan. Yes, Ms. A.
Yes.
Mrs. Mendez.
Yes.
Mr. Minicello.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez. Mrs. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
So moved. All right. And Mrs. Sullivan, A, B, C, no, B, C, and D, the floor is yours.
Okay. Item B is the approval of the Paul and Jean Studinski Memorial Scholarship. The Jean and Paul Studinski Scholarship is provided by the Brockton Democratic City Committee in memory of two strong Democrats, both Paul and Jean, were part of the Brockton Democratic City Committee and believe that a strong democracy started with an educated, educated populace. The applicant must be a pre-registered Democrat under eighteen years of age or a registered Democratic Democrat voter, eighteen years and older at the Elections Commission. Applicant must be accepted to or enrolled in a program designed to receive an associate's degree or higher and accredited college or university. Applicant must submit a completed application packet with all required doc documentation posted by August twenty, two thousand twenty one. And this is a one thousand dollar scholarship and they are taking donations. The second one is the Ramona M. Wells Memorial Scholarship. And this scholarship is twelve hundred dollars. The candidate must be a person of color graduating high school, a Brockton resident, and accepted to an accredited four-year college or university who plans to pursue a career in the field of education. Scholarship is awarded based on need, grit, and merit, proof of acceptance, as well as first semester class schedule must be submitted. Active community involvement is important. And I believe they're also taking donations for that one, too. But right now it stands at twelve hundred dollars. And the third one is the John Davis Memorial Scholarship. This one offers a one-time scholarship is afforded to help people with disabilities who want to return to college to community colleges or career institutes for four-year degrees or graduate education. This scholarship opportunity is also open to students who would like to pursue an education directly related to a career in human services to further support people with disabilities with success in their life's vision. The applicant selected with financial need will display self-determination, a commitment to serving others in the school, their community, or at home, a strong work ethic, ethic, and inclusive qualities. This scholarship is open to all students with diverse abilities and varied support needs. Applicants must be a high school senior, possess a high school diploma or GED, and must be planning to enroll in an accredited college, university, or career institute within the United States. Pays up to one thousand per year.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan, you know, and if I might just a pine for a minute. I know I was standing in for the mayor. Now I sound like him. So just, you know, these three scholarships are great. We have, you know, two that are all about, you know, community involvement and, you know, being a part of the community. I mean, the the Studinski family is multi-generational. You know, community involvement in the city of Brockton, a former mayor, a city councillor. You know, and and the Davis Memorial Scholarship, again, self-determination, commitment to serving others. Those are great things. And then I also wanted to highlight the whole scholarship too, like, like you said, Mrs. Sullivan, this is, this really fits a lot of what we're talking about, trying to, again, you know, grow our own and encourage students to go and become teachers. And hopefully, you know, they'll come back here and also fits with the the goal of diversifying our teaching, our teachers and our staff, which is is a need that, you know, from what I hear is out there nationally. So, you know, we really appreciate these these three scholarships and and what they stand for and can help do. So any other member have a comment on this or a motion?
Motion to approve items B, C, and D.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Mrs. Sullivan, items B, C, and D, seconded by Mr. Sullivan. I'll call the roll. Mayor Sullivan. Place chair is a yes. Ms. Asak.
Yes.
Mrs. Mendez.
Yes.
Mr. Minicello.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez. Mrs. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Okay. So move, motion approved unanimously. And our next item is the report of the superintendent of schools. Superintendent Thomas, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Argusino. We're going to have Jess is going to share her screen so we can go over hybrid reopening PowerPoint. And we'll go through our PowerPoint and others will join me as we go through, and I'll ask others to chime in. Thank you, Jess. I want to appreciate Jess, the executive team and others who Linda Cahill, who helped work on this, Laurie Mason. So I appreciate all the work you put into this. So so we'll go through and then obviously we'll answer any questions. We also can stop during slides in the future, you know, just raise your hand and we'll answer questions as we go as well. So hybrid learning model, which obviously we have not been in where students would split their time between in-person and remote learning. As you know, now we're in full remote learning. In order to ease the transition to returning to the classroom, we have decided to bring students back at a twenty five percent cohort, which means students would be in school for one day each week. And we're doing this again just to have help students transition back to the classroom, making sure you know, we can, in small groups, you know, getting everyone used to being together, wearing masks. You know, the mask breaks, the 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 arrival to school, the dismissal, the passing through the hallway. You know, the mask breaks, the 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 arrival to school, the dismissal, the passing through the hallways. The going to the the girls and boys rooms, I mean, just everything that goes along with being in in school. And we thought it was best to start with small numbers. And then as as we see, you know, as we go through. March and and into April, we'll just see how things go and where the numbers continue to go and and decide whether we. We increase to the fifty percent, which which is I would see as the next step, but again, we. We have to continue to see numbers decline and and make sure that everyone is safe. So here are the target return dates, and again, these are subject to change based on the review, as we have said in 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 school committee meetings on the PEP public health data. So we'll continue to review the the metrics and make sure they're declining, so. A small cohort of high-needs students returns on Tuesday, February twenty-third, which is the week after the vacation. March second, pre-K kindergarten, grade six and grade nine would be phased in again at twenty-five percent. And then on March the ninth, grades one through five, seventh and eighth, and grade ten would be phased in. And then grades eleven and twelve are phased in. And these students, the grade twelve, eleven and twelve, they're phased in this again at Brockton High School. The Champions working on a plan. Addison's working on a plan, obviously the much smaller numbers than the four thousand two hundred students at Brockton High, so. It was important that we had to, again, use another week to phase in Brockton High School students, so eleven and twelve would phase in on March sixteenth. And again, these are all subject to change based on the metrics, but this is the target return dates that have been sent out to parents and. Again, this is at twenty-five percent where only the high-needs students at first would attend two days a week. Students at the Huntington School would start at four days a week and Laurie Mason will explain that when we get to her slides. So this is the cohort breakdown and this information went out yesterday to parents. And the first thing I want to say to parents is, I apologize for any confusion because parents that have told us that they are. Staying keeping their children fully remote did get a cohort assignment. And that's just in case they change their mind and decide to send their children back to school. So they would have a day. So student, parents are allowed to change their mind whether they, we asked them to give us two weeks notice, whether they come in hybrid and then want to switch back remote. Or a remote and want to come in hybrid. It was important for us to make sure. We assign them in-school day, even if they decide to keep their child home. It helped us develop the class lists. It helped us make sure that the class sizes were even at the twenty-five percent. So if 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 Aaron said, you know, I I feel comfortable, I want to send my child to school, they already had that day. And that way it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't mess up the class sizes, so that's the reason why. Even though parents have told us to stay in fully remote, we wanted to make sure we signed them a day just in case they changed their mind. The district would say fully remote on Mondays. And as you can see, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday would be the in-school days again. This would be one day a week, and if we at some point move to fifty percent. Then the cohorts would would come Tuesday, Thursday would be the two days for one cohort. And Wednesday, Friday would be the other two days for the other, the other cohort, so. So that's pretty much the cohort breakdown and and Laurie Mason will go over the cohort breakdown for our special needs students. Laurie, thank you.
Hi, so we used, so our colors are red, black, white, and blue, so our red group is Tuesday, Thursday. So as the district's looking at twenty-five percent of the students, we're at fifty percent for preschool to high school. The Huntington Therapeutic Day School is the only school that is coming, the only students are coming four days a week. So we did the Tuesday, Thursday, red group, Friday, our black group is Wednesday, Friday. We have a number of students that have, parents have opted for them to stay remote. And we have listed them as remote, but as Mike has said, if parents, you know, change their mind, they can just notify. The teacher and we'll transition the student back in. As parents have been emailing us. Was all they've been notified about what day they've also emailed us saying, I I think I've changed my mind. I want my child to be remote. So we know the groups are fluid and flexible. We have. Notified the parents, we have van transportation's been set up. Parents have notified us that they're going to, you know, drive their children to school. Teachers had had multiple days of trainings. We have PPP, PPE already at schools and we've ordered more, shipping it to the schools directly, so everyone will have it before school starts on the twenty-third. We have a CPAC meeting on Thursday night to talk about what to expect when your child returns to school. And I'll be presenting that information to the parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie. So safety, and again, I want to go back to what Laurie said, and it's an important word to remember is flexibility. As we put cohorts together, as we plan for students to come back to school, that's where I think it was important for the twenty-five percent. You know, we need to stay flexible. We need to make sure our parents feel comfortable, our staff is comfortable. That's why it was important for us, you know, to make sure we started slow. And get students used to back, back into being in the building and again, everything that goes with being in school as far as the cafeteria. Moving in the hallways and everything else that goes into school was important to start at small numbers. So the district recently published the following resources on our bpsma.org. It's for parents, it's a daily checklist for screening for COVID nineteen symptoms. There's a flow chart that's explaining how to self, self-isolate if exposed to COVID nineteen after receiving a diagnosis. There's a recorded presentation. I want to thank Linda and the nursing staff for the major amazing job that they have done. Putting the videos together, explaining school safety procedures. And there's also videos that were developed by our educators and nurses for younger students that. That will cover mask-wearing, socially distancing, and and obviously hand washing, everything that keeps us safe. And it's also important to note, the Department of Education has allowed districts to move to three feet. Of social distancing. We are not doing that. We are staying with the six feet. And we will not be using the three feet at this time and. Again, I think it's the right decision based on health and safety. Transportation safety, I want to thank Dr. Cobbs, Macia, Andrade Serper, and Peggy Collier for their hard work, working with first student. Around transportation safety. Students picked up at the first bus stops must sit towards the back, towards the back of the bus and they'll be spaced out. And then they'll load forward from there. Only one student will be allowed in each seat. Students living in the same household will be allowed to sit together. Weather permitting, all windows will remain open. All students are required to wear masks on the bus at all times. And all high-touch surfaces will be clean and disinfected thoroughly in between the morning and afternoon runs. And we are working with for a student closely on that. And then building safety, and I I want to spend a little bit of time on this. On this slide because we have put a ton of time and money into making sure our buildings are safe. All classrooms and lunchrooms have been reconfigured to allow for the six feet of space between students. Through the CARES Act money through Plymouth County that included purchasing. You know, thousands of desks and getting, doing away with tables where we needed to. Air purifiers, again, the district has spent in CARES Act money, one point two million dollars on air purifiers. I think we, at first, we owned every air purifier that was in the state of Massachusetts. I want to thank Aldo and 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 Dr. Cobbs for jumping on that quickly because they were in very high demand. Back in the spring, but, I mean, I'm sorry, back in the fall and and it's the amazing, amazing job that we have all different sizes, sizes for classrooms. Larger ones for classroom, larger, even larger ones for cafeterias and gymnasiums and other large common areas. And we also have the, they're in every classroom as well. And we have also probably another a hundred and fifty to two hundred in stock, just in case one breaks down, so again, I want to thank. Dr. Cobbs and Aldo, Ken Thompson, Jamie Domestico, Tobias Cowens for just going through check-in rooms, making sure air purifiers are running and in place. And they continue to do that. Custodial staff will continuously clean and disinfect common areas in unoccupied classrooms throughout the day. It's all about wiping down thoroughly common areas, doorknobs, handrails. That will be done. Students, there'll be plenty of disinfectant wipes in all classrooms and in the cafeteria. So students are also wiping down their own, their own area when they arrive in class and before they leave class. We have so much hand sanitizer, so many disinfectant wipes, and they're just widely available and will continue. To continue to deliver these to the schools. And I just want to make another point, some, some districts is, as you can see, some of them close on Wednesdays and they do a full remote day to talk about deep cleaning. We have not taken that approach because we deep, if you, if you're doing it the right way against COVID, fighting against COVID. You're disinfecting, disinfecting constantly throughout the day. And then we have night custodial staff when the buildings are empty that will be doing the deep cleaning and spraying the entire building with our, with our electrostatic sprayers. So these are things that you 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 have to be continuously disinfecting the building. It's, you don't just pick one day to deep clean. You pretty much deep clean throughout the day and you deep clean at night, every night of the week, so that's how we're going about this. And then the PPE, all, all students are being given three cloth masks. Again, we have plenty hand sanitizer and wipes. We also have thousands of paper masks. That will be available for students or staff if some reason, if there's an issue with the cloth mask that they bring. We are giving students masks to wear. They also can obviously wear their own from home. Frequent mask breaks will be available. There'll be plenty of time for that and for hand washing. When there are mask breaks given, students have to remain six feet apart. And weather permitting, we'll can, we'll take students outside as well. So there'll be plenty of time to make sure that they're able to take their masks off. And each building, each principal will be sending out their detailed plans because obviously every building is set up differently and they'll be reaching out to the parents. And going over their reopening plans with them, so it's building specific. And entering and exiting school daily drop-off will be done on a rolling basis so we can control the number of students approaching the school at one time. And again, this isn't a reason why it's important to start with the twenty-five percent. Traffic patterns will be given out by the principals to families before we start so they know exactly how traffic will flow in the parking lots. Every student and parent must have their mask on when they're on the school grounds, even if they're outside, they should be wearing their mask. Each classroom will be dismissed one by one to limit the number of students outside in the hallways at one time. And parents and guardians and students must immediately leave school grounds upon dismissal. Just so, you know, again, people and students are not clustered around. Again, this is going to be, that's, it's important to start at the twenty-five percent, so this, make sure this is orderly. Everybody gets used to the daily routines and again, it will help keep everybody safe. And this is a mask requirement, this was put in, these are the masks that will be given out to all students, three each. Again, thanks to the CARES Act, I think we're the one of, I think we're one of only few districts that bought masks for all of our students. And I want to thank the school committee for your support in this. And Aldo and 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 Dr. Cobbs for the amount of time they put into getting these masks. They must be worn by all students and the school committee made this decision when we voted on the handbook addendum back in the summer is that. All students pre-K through, through twelve will be required to wear masks and will be, again, mask breaks will be given throughout the day. In a space where students can be able to socially distance and anyone believed to have a medical exemption. Must provide the written documentation to the school nurse's office. From their doctor on or before their first day in in the classroom, so obviously there are medical exceptions. To wearing masks and and that that medical documentation has to be submitted to the nurse's office before we return to school or on that first day. So daily routine, and again, this, this is something we continue to tweak. You know, all students, again, live instruction, this is the student learning time. Over a ten-day period in accordance with the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Education Guidelines, and this time includes the in-school time. So it's also that's, so the six, six and a half hours a student will be in school, that that time counts towards this. That's considered live instruction as well. And, you know, just so parents know that we will be following the Department of Education guidelines. You know, for the live instruction that students are getting. Since our teachers will now have students in the classroom with them, it is likely that students at home will receive more independent work. As you know, right now during the remote learning, we have all students are remote, so. The student is front, in front of the computer with the teacher, pretty much for most of the six and a half hours a day. And now when there's going to be some students, students in front of them. Again, there'll be some more independent work from students. The teachers will drive the instruction for the students at home. But again, there is going to be more independent work than than students. See now when they're home, it's just, it's just because, again, we're getting used to now a hybrid model, which is different than remote. But we are committed to sticking to the Massachusetts, the DESE student learning time guidelines. Student meals, all students will eat lunch in the school cafeterias, and again, they'll be six feet apart. When eating, cafeterias will be sanitized between each lunch period. Breakfast will not be eaten in, in, at school unless there's a medical emergency. However, students will be given meals to take home on the days they are not in school. And our grab and go program will continue to operate so parents can come and get breakfast for their, for their children. You know, the night before, and we're working on a Sunday grab and go program as well that we're going to put in place. When we're back to school, but again, students will not be eating in the classrooms, they'll be eating in the cafeterias. And breakfast will be served as the night before, given students through the grab and go, and we also will give students meals to go home with as well for the day that they're in school. Again, social emotional supports, and I'll actually let Sharon jump in and she's been spending a lot of time with her team on this and in. Spending a lot of time putting together workshops for teachers and I'll have Sharon explain just how we're going to support our, our students, our social emotional well-being.
Good evening. In terms of social emotional support, as you all know, we have focused very much on self-care. Throughout this entire pandemic and really supporting teachers and developing some strategies for self-care. And those strategies are applicable to students and it really is about. Acknowledging those moments of anxiety for adults because as kids come back into school. They've been with their teachers all of this time, but none of them have been wearing masks. The teachers aren't masked to teach. In a remote setting and the students certainly aren't sitting at home in masks for the most part. And so some of the changes that kids are going to experience when they return to school after really a year of being away from it. The culture and climates of the schools are going to be totally different, and so. Taking that time to to slowly work with small groups of students and help them understand the new conditions. Help them feel safe because ultimately everybody needs to feel safe in order to learn. And so taking that time to to hear students and have an empathetic listening opportunities to learn about their experiences, learn about. Some of the things that they need. You heard earlier tonight, an experience that happened in a household, and so. Our students are coming back changed because they've spent more time at home in the last year than they have during the school year. Their entire lives up until they, you know, from before they started school, and so. Things are different for them and taking that time to really learn from them what they need in order to feel safe in school. Practicing with them the changes that they're experiencing and understanding that at some time, at point, somebody may fall a little short, but it's not. Something to be disciplined for, but really giving them those opportunities to learn. Learn what it means to be six feet apart. You know, we don't have measuring tapes on the floor showing them what six feet looks. Learn what it means to be six feet apart. You know, we don't have measuring tapes on the floor showing them what six feet looks like. So helping them learn how to pace out that six feet distance when they're not sitting in their seats and keeping their mask on and wearing them appropriately and letting them know a key thing for everybody will be to know when those mask breaks are taking place and what they look like. So they they know at what point it is okay to take off the mask. So some of those things are going to, it really is about the health and well-being of everyone, but doing it in a way that's very supportive and helping students acclimate back into school. And they'll have one day and then they go back home and then they start over the next week. So some of it will be, it will seem like we just went over this, but it will take some time for people to develop habits. And that's really what we have to work with students on as they return back, is how to develop the habits they need to be in a school setting now. And to do that with compassion and with support, we have adjustment counselors. The Health Department has done a wonderful job developing SEL lessons that they have focused on during this entire time and will continue to do so. And so the staff in the building that work with SEL are well-equipped and and ready to go. And teachers have have been doing a lot of work with self-care and SEL for self and those strategies apply to the students. And so we'll continue to work with schools to to develop ways to support the staff as they're supporting students. And of course, once we get into the building and see what the needs are, as people start to see what, you know, we're what-if-ing a lot. And once students get back into the buildings and people say, this is the need, we'll know exactly what we need to do to support some of those needs.
Mr. Diagostino, I think Ms. Azak has a question.
I do. Actually, I have a few. Sorry, we, did you have much more to go over or?
I think there's a few slides, but do you want to want to take them now? We can take them now or wait?
Um, it's up to you. I I can wait because my questions are all over the place. So they're not just, okay.
Linda Cahill is with us and she's going to go over the next few slides about the medical waiting rooms and other information that she can give us from, obviously, Linda is a head, head of director of nursing, but also has spent a ton of time with the Board of Health.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for inviting me to speak. So we're preparing for our kids to come back after vacation. And in each school, there is designated medical waiting rooms. So we can't stress enough, if you're not feeling well, please don't send, please don't come to work if your staff and the children, don't send them to school if they're not feeling well. So if any students come down with COVID-like symptoms while they're in school, the teacher is going to call ahead to the main office to tell them that there's a student for the medical waiting room, so they can alert the nurse. And the medical waiting room will be staffed by certified nurses assistants or nurses. So once the call goes to the main office, the main office will let the nurse know and that will alert the staff that is supposed to be in the medical waiting room to dawn their BPE, their positive, their personal protective equipment, which is, will be a face shield, a mask, gowns and gloves. And the student will go to the medical waiting room in a way picked up by a parent. So please, if you have not signed your emergency forms, please send them in before the kids come back to school and put on quite a few people to pick up your child if you yourself cannot come and pick up your child, because they really need to go home. And they can't go home on the bus if they have any signs of COVID. So once you go to get your child or your designee goes to get your child, you'll be given information on when it's safe to return to school. So these medical waiting rooms have courts, they're going to have Plexiglas dividers if the if the children can't be six feet apart. And I want to thank you, thank Dr. Cobb's and Ken Thompson for getting those. And so I wanted to talk about close contacts. So if your child has been identified as being a close contact, we really encourage families to get tested, the close contacts to be tested. So it is, the recommendation is to be tested on day five. So the date of exposure is considered day zero. So you count to day five, get tested and monitor for symptoms. You got to monitor for symptoms for 14 days. If your child has no symptoms and tests negative on day five, they can return on day eight and you're going to continue to monitor for symptoms. If anybody's symptomatic, they should stay home. They can return to school on day 11 if they're, sorry, that's my cat. If they've had no symptoms. Next slide, please. If your child tests positive and has no symptoms, they have to be out for a minimum of 10 days. Now remember, if the test date is, if their child has no symptoms, the test date is considered day zero. So you count out to 10 days, they can return on day 11 and you're continuing to monitor for symptoms. They they'll be called by the Board of Health or a contact tracer and they have to be cleared to to return. If your child tests positive and has symptoms, again, they have to be out minimum of 10 days. And they can return if they've been without fever-reducing substances, which is Tylenol or Advil, so they can return on day 11 if their symptoms have improved and they've had no fever for 24 hours. If a parent chooses not to test, again, they have to be out minimum of 10 days. And you're going to, so contact tracing. Once a patient tests positive, you'll be notified by a contact tracer, either through the local Boards of Health. Our nurses are continuing to contact trace. If we see a kid that is one of our kids in the school system, that nurse is notified. And the nurse is will help with the family as far as trying to figure out who has been in close contact with that positive case. So it is if the person's symptomatic, it's two days before until the time of the interview. And then the local Board of Health or the contact tracer will advise the person as far as where to go to get tested and how long they have to be out for. And all the close contacts will have to be quarantined. The nurses and the contact tracers will also let you know where you can go to get tested. The Massasoit site's opening tomorrow. I guess today wasn't open, so it's supposed to open up tomorrow. And I just want to give a shout out to the nurses that assisted since the beginning of the pandemic. They have gone above and beyond. And also, they've been assisting with the vaccine clinics that we've been having at Brockton High School.
So again, if you're not receiving text messages from us, please make sure you text yes to 67587. Again, please text yes to 67587 to opt in for text messages. The district, along with schools, will be having informational sessions live. So each school will do it with with their families before we return. The week after vacation will be for the, for all schools to do that. So parents can ask questions of their of their principals. Again, each school has very detailed reopening plans that is tailored specifically for their school and how their building is set up and how their parking lots are set up. They're all different. Laurie Mason will have questions and she's providing an informational session this Thursday, February 11th. Laurie, what time is that session?
6:30.
Six thirty, it starts at 6:30?
Yes.
Yep. So and where can people get the link?
It's on our Brockton Public Schools page. Jess put it on there. Parents were sent the link on a newsletter and it's also on our Brockton CPAC page.
Okay, so through CPAC, Laurie Mason will be meeting with with students of, parents of students with disabilities that are starting school on February 23rd. So we ask parents to please attend that informational session again, this Thursday, February 11th, starting at 6:30. And the link is on our website. And all you can call if you're having a problem with that, you can always call the Special Education Office and we can answer any questions you may have. If you can't make that meeting, you will be happy to take any phone calls, emails to answer questions and make sure you get a response.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And now we can take questions.
Great. Well, first, you know, I want to thank everybody who was involved in putting this together. I know, you know, Jess and Laurie and the superintendent, and I'm sure there's a bunch more people that were involved in in getting this plan together that I'm not mentioning. And you know, we appreciate all of the the effort that clearly went into this. It looks like you really, you know, thought through every element that we need to be ready for. So with that, let me, I know Ms. Azak has some questions, so maybe we'll start with with Ms. Azak. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much. So thank you Superintendent Thomas and and your executive team. You know, Jess Hodges, you've been there. Every time we had questions and constituents reached out to us, you've always been there to get me some answers. Quick, quickly, actually. So a couple of questions I have is, I know we brought this up last year, masks. So we just need to, you know, remind the students and their families that the masks really need to be the masks that we either provide for them, because sometimes there's masks that, you know, our youth are wearing that are not, it's just like a T-shirt material. So it's it's more of a accessory than an actual mask to keep everyone safe. So I I thought we talked about this a few months back that they're either to wear the masks that we provide for them, they have to be specific masks. It was, it was back, I think, in the summertime. We we had gone over this. You know, just so kids aren't showing up with masks that are just really thin and it's more of an accessory. The whole purpose of wearing the mask is to keep keep everyone safe around you. You know, we're wearing them for a reason. So is it something, just so the parents know, they need to have
They have to be the the double-layered masks that, you know, you can't be a bandana. And those, that's clear in the addendum to our handbook. So we'll make sure we remind parents of that. And again, we are giving all all students three cloth masks, the Brockton with the Brockton logo. And we have plenty of paper masks, the blue paper masks as backups. Every building will have hundreds of those. And so we also have other cloth masks, I think, that were given to us by the Department of Education. And that was one for every student. We also, actually, every student will be getting four masks. The ones from the Department of Ed are not as, not nice as us. They they fit the requirements for double-layered, but they there's no logo or anything, but they did give us a mask for every student. So there are actually four cloth masks that we'll be giving out to all students when they return to school.
Okay.
Yep.
Sorry. Yeah, just so the parents know that, you know, they have to, the masks need to fall within certain certain guidelines as far as, you know, what they're wearing. I wanted to say thank you to Linda Cahill. I actually went on to our homepage to see what our, what our families are going to be watching. And I was, the PowerPoint was very informative. You know, I I watched it. There's a lot of information on there for a lot of the families. Just go on to the homepage and it's a tab and it has all the information that the families need. So if they feel like they missed something tonight, all this information is online. So back to some of my questions.
Ms. Azak, can I jump in for one second just to remind parents as well? I want to thank Kelly Jones and the bilingual community facilitators. They also have spent a lot of time making sure that everything's translated. So if parents who English is their second language and they need help with getting any information about hybrid or the return to school, you know, the bilingual department, along with our community facilitators, are there to provide any information. And we'll make, you know, we just want to make sure that our families know that's available as well.
Okay. Thank you. And one other question, I'm sorry, I will make this really quick, everybody. So high school, how are we doing the high school lunches in the cafeterias? That's been a question from some of the high schoolers. Were the tables are small? How we, how are we doing this?
Students will be six feet apart. And that's what, again, that's the reason for, especially at the high school with the 25%. Dr. Murray is here, so I can let him jump on because, and again, I I want to thank, you know, I know you know, people thank the executive team and and us and and Linda and all of us for putting this together. But I want to be clear that the the reopening committee, which is the district design team, our principals, our associate principals, a lot of assistant principals, all the assistant principals through those teams and also what they've done at the school, you know, with their own teams and and all the teachers at each school have in developing their own plan that's specific to the buildings and they'll be sharing that with the parents. But every building, their reopening plans are very detailed, very well-planned and thought out by the staff at the schools. And I can, Dr. Murray can jump in and explain the lunches at Brockton High School.
Good evening, everyone. So the cafeteria, the tables are a little over six feet in diameter from corner to corner. So we've been able to space out approximately 50 tables in each one of our four cafeterias with two seats at each table. So we can accommodate approximately 100 students. Obviously, we would prefer to start with a much smaller number. And thanks to the superintendent and the school committee's approval, we're going to be able to do just that. So we can accommodate about 100 students at a time in our cafeterias. That would be about 400 students a lunch. And we do run three lunches. So we're very comfortable and feel very confident that we can do that safely and efficiently for both our staff and our students.
Thank you. Two questions left. So as far as the busing, you know, we have that they're going to, after each each run, the bus drivers are going to go through and disinfect the bus as far as, are they using the spray that we have? It was like a, I don't want to call it a spray gun. The one that we had used that dries quickly during graduation. Are they going to have something like that? Or are they wiping down the seats?
It would be
Would it make more sense to give them one of those spray guns?
No, they would be wiping it down. I mean, it's, they would be wiping down. I have to talk, I've talked to first student, they have a clear plan of wiping down the buses and they might have the disinfectant guns as well. I'll find out.
I think the disinfectant guns would make more sense than to try to have them wipe down every single seat. I think it's just safer if they can somehow.
I'll find out exactly. I mean, Dr. Cobb, I think, is with us. He spent a lot of time. So Dr. And I know for a student, again, they serve several districts throughout the state and they've been running students in hybrid learning across the state and they have a clear plan as a company to disinfect. So I'll let Dr. Cobb say, he's been over that with them several times.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Superintendent. Yes, so actually, it's a combination of both. They will be wiping down the high-touch surfaces in between the two tier runs, you know, when they have to turn right around. You know, they they can stop and they wipe down the high-touch surfaces. Each bus will be sprayed down in the evening when it's parked with the hydrostatic sprayers to disinfect, so it can sit overnight and didn't disinfect surfaces. So it's a combination of both.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that does make sense because, you know, I'm thinking that that a lot of common areas where we're going to have our students, you know, sitting for for a while, a lot of touch areas that we really need to make sure are definitely disinfected. Another concern that I'm getting from a lot of parents in is who determines when the windows are open on the buses, given the the temperatures, especially the extreme temperatures in the morning? How do we do this safely without our students getting sick?
So I can, I can answer that as well. Because we're meeting with the Massachusetts Association of People Transport and and the CDC guidelines. They recommend, you know, having the windows open when weather permitting, but they only have to be open like an inch, you know, on the bus, not wide open. So they, you know, the buses can stay warmer. So and again, this is the short transport time for the most part. So but that's the goal, is to have just some airflow, not all the windows open, you know, wide open, just maybe one inch, and not even necessarily all of them.
No, thank you for the clarification, because that was a concern, you know, especially in the morning hours. It's very cold early in the morning. So, you know, parents just don't want their children getting sick. And who is going to monitor? Are the bus drivers, you know? A concern is, is who's going to monitor to make sure the students are not going from one bench to another on the buses? And is it one of those, you either listen? is it one of those you either listen if you want to take the bus? And if you don't, it's a privilege. Are we gonna, we're gonna have to be extremely strict? Just it's it's all about keeping everyone safe on the bus. You know, we, I I used to take the bus as a student. You know, we used to pack three, four people in a bench sometimes. So it just, are the bus drivers are going to be right on on things? I mean, we don't have bus monitors.
No, we we are, the bus drivers will be monitoring that. And again, at 25%. And several parents telling us that they're not going to be letting their children take the bus. The buses are not going to be crowded at all. Again, we can only allow 23 on the bus, no more. So between, which is one for every seat. And there are going to be some buses that have less than that because a lot of parents have indicated that they will be driving their child to school. So the numbers alone, you know, with the 25% will be low on the bus. And then you compound that with the number of parents who have told us that they're going to be that usually students that usually took a bus last year in normal times. They will not be taking a bus this year. So the numbers on the buses are going to be low in the in the in the the bus drivers, like always, will, you know, you know, monitor the bus. But if there's an issue, they'll let the principal know. And if there are, if continue to be issues on the bus, then, you know, we would put a monitor on the bus when needed. And, you know, obviously, that's if there's issues that we have to deal with, and we've done that before to make sure that you know, obviously, everybody's following not only the the rule about masks and distancing, but also about behavior on the bus as well.
Okay. Thank you. And I think the last question I have is, it's mostly the common areas. I mean, we're going to do as much as that, as much as we can to keep the to keep our schools disinfected, you know, throughout the day. But what do we do about like restrooms and and things that are, you know, the that's that's like a germ germ place right there. The restrooms are especially like in the high schools. Whereas the elementary in the middle, you can probably control that a little more. Are we going to be able to focus a little on that? Make sure our custodians were constantly going in there and just keeping that spray there?
Yeah, Dr. Cobb can update you on that. There's a whole plan in place.
Yes, I'm gonna say, Zach, we 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 actually have a checklist that will go on the each restroom and the and the custodians will, you know, go to at least hourly and and wipe down and and sign off on the checklist as they pick up, you know, pick up and wipe down surfaces. So and again, they have you, everyone is sprayed in the morning before the students arrive and and in the evening, everything's wiped down again and and sprayed before they leave in the evening.
Okay, no, that's impressive. I mean, hourly, you can't ask for more. I mean, hourly for him to have them do that. That's great. Thank you so much for answering my questions. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. I believe the next one I saw was Mr. Rodriguez.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the presentation, everybody involved. My question, if Mike can answer this or anybody else, they could jump in, is would we be considering the independent work when the when the students are at home? When they're not in person? If you can elaborate more, like, what is that gonna, you know, what's what's that entail?
Well, it's it's basically with like the teacher, you know, will be launching the lesson together with the with the class. And then we'll have to spend some time with the students in front of them. So and then she will have students at home would be do some independent work. Again, for, you know, for short periods of time and the teacher will then check in with them. So it's not going to be the, you know, the the teacher checks in with them and then I'll see you at the end of the day or I'll see you again at lunchtime. I mean, there'll be, you know, check ins, they'll launch the lesson. And again, we're working out the details of that. I just, again, there's gonna, you know, students at home will be getting instruction. Don't don't get me wrong. And it's just it's not going to be the straight six hours in front of a computer that they're seeing now because the teachers do have to hand, you know, teach the students in front of them. But they will, students at home at home will obviously have contact throughout the day with their teachers in the classroom.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Mrs. Sullivan.
Hi, I just had a question for Superintendent Thomas, just to clarify, because some parents did have a problem. They had a lot of questions on. So the kids that are hybrid will be there in front of the teacher. And the kids online that are in that same class will be with that same teacher there. Okay, because I thought we were going to do the remote kids completely separate.
So some just some parents who have signed up to keep their their children fully remote. So you're gonna have this two different remote groups of students. You have students that are hybrid who are coming to school one day, the one day a week or the two days a week with students with special needs. And then they're going to obviously be home the rest of the time. Obviously, they they will be with their teacher. They're not going to be with another teacher. And we are working, and again, our goal, and and we've been working closely with Kim Gibson and the BEA to keep students with their teachers. But again, it's, you know, it's last minute staffing needs and principals are really working hard to make sure that we fill our open vacancies for paras to make sure there's a physical adult in the room. And again, we are, we're working on it and probably by this by the end of this week, we'll be able to get the message out to our fully remote parents about, you know, the teacher. But again, that's, you know, that's our goal. But it's it's making sure we fill last minute holes to make sure that, you know, no classroom goes uncovered. There's also obviously has to be a physical body in the room. And then for teachers who are, you know, have medical notes who are staying fully remote, they obviously can't be in school. So that's where you need the extra paraprofessional or MTA to be able to cover the room. So we're working on that now. And by the end of this week, we should have we'll let those parents know. But so there's a difference between the fully remote kids and then the students in hybrid. Again, that's, you know, the goal is to obviously have, they would have the same teacher. And again, it just for the fully remote, we just have to work on the staffing and I, by the end of this week and you know, we should be able to let them know.
Okay, so the kids, the kids that are hybrid on both schedules or will all be with the same teacher, those kids that'll be on online that day will be the kids that go on the other days.
Yeah, exactly. And again, our goal is to keep all, and and again, our goal is to keep everybody with their teacher, but it it's doubt, you know, it's making sure that we can cover the the staff that we have out that is gonna, they're gonna stay out and they're gonna continue to teach remotely. And we just have to make sure, again, we can have the physical adult in the room to monitor the students who are there. So we can continue to have those students with their teachers.
Thank you very much. I know everybody's working.
No, I know. And again, I know, and I know that's been frustrating for people. It just hasn't been an easy, you know, you know, a lot of, in a lot of school districts, probably, you know, early in the year, we, knowing we were going remote, we we kept those students who signed up for virtual. We we kept them with their teachers and a lot of districts sent them to either an online program like Edgenuity or they they had a virtual school where they just had remote teachers. We, you know, that was really tough for us to, you know, to get that going early in the year. And since we've been fully remote, obviously, it was best to keep the students with their schools, with their teachers. And our good goal is to do that. But again, we have to work out some staffing issues before we you know, before we make that determination. But it should be by the end of this week.
All right. Thank you for all your hard work.
All right, Mr. Sullivan.
Yes, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes.
I know you got the the high school coming back in the middle of March or the end of March. What happens when with the vaccination program? Will you move that to the afternoon?
That's actually, that vaccinations, actually, after next week is that's moving to the Shaw Center. The high school won't be used as a vaccination site once the students are back in school.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Great. Anybody else? All right.
Yeah, I just just to circle back and I and I appreciate Mr. Rodriguez asking the question about, you know, the independent work. And I just want it to be clear to parents that, you know, kids are not going to be left at home for those four days at home or the five days at home. They're just basically here's, you know, the teachers with them in the morning, then they'll see them again at the end of the day. There'll be obviously frequent check ins and teachers are working hard. And again, just like when we started remote learning, there's going to be some bumps when we start. But as we get through the first few weeks, I think and we get, you know, everybody gets used to the hybrid model, then, you know, it'll be smooth. But students are just gonna, you know, not going to be left at home just to, you know, do their own thing all day. It was obviously will be teacher driven instruction and with some independent work. And then, you know, there'll be check ins throughout the day. I just, you know, we just, I just want to make sure we're honest with people that you're not going to have the full live instruction that you're getting in the remote setting because teachers do have to spend some time, obviously, with their students in in front of them and also have to spend some time with students at home. So I will send out sample schedules. We're meeting again tomorrow and we'll have some sample schedules that we're able to share with parents. And again, as we continue to move through hybrid, it's, things will be fine tuned and refined and just like we had to do with remote learning, but we'll definitely get sample set schedules out to parents probably by the end of this week as well.
You know, Superintendent, you just said exactly what I was thinking and I and I I think it's a good thing to bring up about, you know, we're going to roll this out. We've got a plan. But we'll fine tune it, which we did when we first rolled out remote learning. I mean, remote learning isn't exactly today what the way it was when it first started, right? We recognize that especially the younger grades were having trouble being on Zoom for all those hours. So we made adjustments and made changes that were worked out a lot better. And this will be the same way where we'll, we'll roll this out, but we'll you know, find things that we fine tune and do better and things that aren't working as well as we as we'd hoped and and we'll make those adjustments. We'll get feedback from students and parents and staff and and that'll that'll help us to fine tune this and make the adjustments. You know, so I definitely, you know, we need to hear from 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 folks as we roll this out so that we can make those adjustments because it was the feedback we were getting at the beginning of the year that helped us make some of the adjustments we made. You know, to to make this run smoother. So anyway.
Yeah, and you're right, because we, I mean, the most feedback, we got most, pretty much all the feedback I got from parents and I appreciate it. And also from students is that you got to get us offline here some for some time because it's, you know, it's, you know, you, and again, it's just a testament to the teachers, how hard they worked. But the, you know, 98% of the feedback was, you know, this is too much. You've just, you have to give the kids some time to, you know, get away from the computer and and that's going to be, you know, like that in the hybrid model. And we say independent work, that just doesn't mean, you know, go outside and play. You're actually following a curriculum. You know, the students having to do work is, you know, is based off of the standards, based off of what the the teachers are teaching that day. It's based off a curriculum. It's just not, you know, you know, go outside and collect leaves. You know, this is something that you know, is is educationally sound. And again, as the teachers get into the hybrid model and as we all get used to it, things will need need to be tweaked. And again, we'll listen to feedback from parents and also feedback from teachers. But how much time they have spent over the last several weeks working in their schools, working with each other to get ready for the, you know, the hybrid model. And again, the amazing job they did with have done with remote and continue to do. And I'm sure they'll be the same in hybrid. Again, it's going to be a change, though. There's no doubt about it's going to be a change. And but again, I think it's important to start to get students back into school. And I think this is the most with the 25% is the safest way to do it.
Makes sense. So Mike, I think what's next on on your
Oh, I'm sorry. I know Sharon covered social emotional support. Shannon, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to cover there. You're under C. I think she did that in the middle of the presentation. So
I did. However, I I can add that we do have contract with a mental health clinician, Dr. Booth, who has been working with me and will offer a parent academy for social, emotional health and well being. And so we will be getting the information together for that and getting that out. And he will also do some work with, with, continue to work with schools and students on some of the things that people are experiencing as they return. And we, like you said, we know that as students come back, we will have to make some adjustments and and add in some supports. The superintendent spoke at a meeting, one of the meetings previously about the six additional adjustment counselors that we are getting. And so we will continue to support schools and support students and families as we move forward.
Very good.
Thanks, Sharon.
I think I froze. I don't know if you heard me.
No, we heard you to the end, right? Everybody heard her? Yep.
Okay.
Thanks, Sharon. Next, we have Mr. Mr. Kero, Kevin Kero, our athletic director is here to present to you the MIAA guidelines around fall two, is it fall two sports, right?
Fall two.
Fall two, which, and I'll let Mr. Kero go on what sports those are. And and just like before, the school, you know, school committee would have to take a vote to allow us to participate in those sports.
All right. Thanks for having me. I'll make this short, sweet, simple as I can. As you know, in September, when we rolled out fall, MIAA pushed football to this floating season. And we'd have another couple other sports that go with that, winter, actually indoor track. It's not indoor track, it's winter track because we don't have any facilities to run in. Then girls volleyball, because we didn't have any students in the building, we moved that to this fall two season. And cheerleading. So those are the four sports that we would offer here in this fall two season. And it is scheduled to begin on February the 22nd. And it would go through the end of April vacation, which I believe is like the 24th of April. It's going to be interesting just for the fact that with football and and winter track being outdoors, we're at the mercy of the weather and we can't use locker rooms other than to change at 10 per 10 people at a time. So there's a lot of things that we need to figure out. I mean, we've already started planning to get those things in place to keep everybody safe. Girls volleyball, we're still looking for a league to join just for this fall two season. Us and Durfee are in a position where we don't have any games. So we've reached out to the South Coast Conference, the Mayflower League, the Hockamark League, Bay State League. So I'm hoping that they will allow us to come in and just join a cohort. So we were able to get some games for the girls volleyball teams. And with cheerleading, they would be cheering at home football games only. We try to keep the numbers to a minimum. But I feel comfortable that like we've said before, that we've taken what we've done in the past and we've tweaked some things to keep everybody safe. I think that the kids have really gotten in the habit of, you know, they come into the gym, they sanitize their hands, their masks are up. We disinfect all the equipment beforehand afterwards. And we've been very fortunate that we've had a very small number of kids that have gotten sick, but it's because of their household contacts. It wasn't anything that happened at school during when they were playing. So I think that if we continue to be vigilant with, you know, having all the coaches take temperatures when the kids come in, they do a daily check in. We keep our social distance. We practice good hygiene. But I think that we we should be able to have a very successful and safe, most importantly, fall two season.
Great. Can I ask, you said you don't have a league for girls volleyball, correct?
No. No, because the other teams in our league, Dartmouth, Bridgewater, Rainham and New Bedford, they played in the fall, the, the original fall season. So right now it's just Durfee and Brockton. And we are just having a very, very, I mean, extremely difficult time finding opponents.
Right, okay. That's what I thought it was, because I think we went into the red and a lot of the other districts were still able to play. Okay, all right. So I just wanted to clarify on that. And, you know, like you said, I mean, so far, there've been minimal issues with the sports. I mean, it's the, it's now the third, this is the third round that you're doing.
Third round. In the, in the thing with winter track, all the meets would be virtual. I mean, in the past, we've run against other schools, either at Wheaton or at the Reggie Lewis Center. Now we're just going to, coaches in the league have already met. We're, we're just going to do virtual meets and just post times online. It's really preseason to get them ready for spring track when the weather gets better.
Great, great.
And it, and we'll do, again, I know Ken and Jamie, if they're working with our outside grounds crew of how best to, because unfortunately it doesn't look like the snow is going to stop anytime soon with the weather, weather pattern we're in. So we'll continue to do the best clearing the field and the track. But, you know, we also have to be careful that, you know, there is going to be some snow left on it because there's no way we're going to take a plow blade. And obviously, and have it flush with our million dollar field. So, you know, the way we're going to clear that, we have to do it carefully, safely, to make sure nothing's damaged. And so that, you know, could, it could lead to, you know, half inch to an inch of snow behind. And hopefully the sun will, will take care of it. But it's, it's going to be sloppy. Just, there's no doubt about it. Because, you know, it, it's, it doesn't look like the snow is going to stop anytime soon. Hopefully it does. But by watching the weather this morning, it's just, we're in that, we're in that Canadian weather pattern. That doesn't look, they think is going to be with us for at least another two weeks.
Right, okay. I think Mrs. Sullivan, put your hand up. No? Yes, okay. I thought I saw you and then I see Mr. Rodriguez after. Go ahead, Judy.
Oh, I didn't have my hand up, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Never mind.
I just wanted to ask one question though, but I can go after.
Okay, yeah. I apologize. I thought I saw Judy putting her hand up. Go ahead, Tony.
All right, Mr. Kero, in regards to spectators for the football game, what's, what's the guidelines with that? I know with the high school, with the, with basketball, there were no fans. How are we treating this with the football?
I think we would do the same that we did in the fall, in which we allowed two parents or two family members per player. And we would give, you know, they would have to come in and check in with us at the gate. We would socially distance them in the stadium and they would have to wear their masks, just all the, all the protocols that we did back in the, in the fall for soccer and field hockey.
Also, I mean, I know we have a lot of booster clubs that, uh, they run concession stands, so that's all out of the question.
Yeah, concession stands as of right now, they're, they're a no-go.
Thank you.
So, Mr. K, I just wanted, oh, sorry, Ms. Sullivan. Sorry, go ahead. This is.
That's okay. That's okay. You can go.
Now I'll go after you.
Okay, it was just, it wasn't a question for Mr. Kero. It was a question about the opening. So can I still ask it now? Yep, okay. So this was another concern of the parents that I saw, you know, today is if the siblings, I know we said that they're going to go the same day, the siblings, right? So now, does that mean across all the schools, elementary, middle and high? Okay.
So Mr. and Ethan had to run. But after doing the initial, and this is pretty amazing how hard, you know, Ethan worked with IT department, Mr. DePonte and, and our schools. I think after today and we again, I think we only had four conflicts where it didn't work out, which is amazing with sixteen thousand students. So again, the, the goal is, the only thing we could guarantee is that all siblings that, you know, from the same household would go to school on the same day. Now, obviously, if you have a child with disabilities who's going to be going the two days a week, then that one child will be in school an extra day. But we wanted to make sure we guaranteed that household members, brother, you know, brothers and sisters that, you know, would go on the same day. And as of today, we had about four conflicts they were fixing. But if that, if that is, if there's more than that, and that has not happened for parents, you know, they need to call the school directly and the principal will, will work with them and we'll get that problem solved.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. And then Mr. K, I just want to, again, want to commend you. I want to commend all the coaches for the job that they've done. You know, very strange season they had to go through and with pretty much no playoffs, no tournament. But the job that they and the, and the students have done to keep themselves safe and, and the effort and time that they've put in, I just want to thank you and thank them.
I appreciate that. And I just want to thank all of you for trusting, that trusted me and, and the coaches and the kids that we do the right thing. And it's just, just the highlight I just wrote down, just be, I, I think a big factor in having the, the sports in the fall and the winter, we, we've been able to sign four kids to college scholarships in various sports. And I don't, I think that without this, that some of these kids would have been left behind. And so they were presented with this great opportunity and they took advantage of it. I think it will continue in fall two and in the spring. Because we have some really talented kids.
Excellent. Yeah, and, and that's why I'm glad we were able to, I know the seasons aren't normal. And, you know, there's a lot of changes that had to be made. The sport itself had to be changed. But I know I heard from a lot of folks who were concerned about just that issue of scholarship opportunities for their, for their seniors. So I'm glad to hear that some of our seniors have, have been able to preserve those and still take advantage of those. Superintendent, I assume you need a vote on this from us this evening?
Yeah, it would be a, a vote to approve, to allow us to participate in the fall two sports season.
Okay. Anybody else? Unless there's any other comment? Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion if I could.
Please, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that Brockton Public Schools moves forward with the fall two sports on the four leagues that we, that Kevin Carroll has talked about. The football, girls volleyball, winter track and cheerleading to start on February twenty-second.
Second.
Motion on the floor properly seconded by Ms. Asak. I will call the roll. Mayor Sullivan. Vice Chair D'Agostino, yes. Ms. Asak?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Minicello?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Can I say most definitely?
You sure can.
Yes, yes.
That's a, a firm yes, right? Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Kero.
Great news. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. DiAgostino, that is the end of the report of the superintendent of schools. Thank you all.
All right. No items to refer to subcommittee this evening? No? All right, I'm just checking. All right. Thank you, Superintendent. So the next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Is there a member of the committee that has a piece of unfinished business to bring up? Mr. Sullivan?
Is that security and safety meeting unfinished or is that new business? I'm not sure.
It would be unfinished.
And I do have something to bring up unfinished.
Floor is yours.
Sec, Security, Safety and Transportation Subcommittee met February second, twenty-twenty-one. Chair was Tim Sullivan, members Joyce Asak and Tony Rodriguez. Meeting was called to order at five-thirty PM. Quorum was met, one hundred percent present. We had a PowerPoint presentation from Aldo Patronio and Dr. Jim Cobb on the purchasing of new school buses. A lot of questions were asked and answered. A motion was made by Tony Rodriguez, seconded by Joyce Asak to move favorably to the School Finance Committee. A motion, the motion was passed unanimously, also approving the purchase of seventy buses. Meeting was adjourned at six-fifteen PM.
All right. And I think we need, uh, we need, I think we need a motion to accept the recommendation of the subcommittee.
Motion.
Second. All right, so a motion to accept the recommendation of the subcommittee, if I heard it right, was by Mr. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. And I will call the roll on that. Running out of sheets. Okay, let's see, let's go with security, trans, sub. Okay. So Mayor Sullivan. D'Agostino, yes. Ms. Asak?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Minicello?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Okay. Then under, also other unfinished business, I have two items that are kind of tied together with Mr. Sullivan's item. So first thing, Tuesday, February second, the Finance Subcommittee met. And I'd like to bring forward, the minutes aren't ready yet, but item one of that, that finance meeting, purchase of buses and vans. We had a discussion related to the purchase of buses and vans. And a motion was made by Mr. Sullivan to move favorably to the full committee to approve the amount of five point two million dollars to purchase up to seventy buses with consultation with our lawyer. And then it was seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. I took a roll call vote and the vote to make the, to move this to the full committee was unanimous. And so as a point of information, I did have that discussion with our, with our lawyer as well as Troy Clarkson, our CFO. And they didn't see any, any potential problem with us accepting this recommendation at this time. Mr. Patronio, I know you're with us, you know, before we do any motions, is there any comment you want to add to this or?
Yes, at that meeting, we discussed radios and air conditioning on the buses. So Dr. Cobb's and I met again a couple of times with the bus vendor, worked through those additional costs, added a, added a little bit more cost to the overall project, which we can afford within our budget. And in discussions with the CFO of the city and, and our legal counsel, they suggested that we have a special meeting for the actual, the actual transfer of the funds from operations to capital purchases, so that we vote on that. They want the meeting posted with that in it, so it's very clear. To meet the, the state law of posting meetings, since this is something very specific. So I think we're in good shape. So hopefully the, we can set up a special meeting to just go through that one item, post it and discuss it and move forward on it and we'll be ready to at least get this project started.
All right, Mr. Patronio, thank you very much. It's almost like you read my mind. That would be my next item after we, uh, vote on whether or not to accept the favorable recommendation of finance. So is there a motion to accept the favorable, to accept the favorable recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee? As it relates to the purchases of buses and vans?
Motion to accept the favorable motion about the purchase of buses.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor for Mr. Sullivan, properly seconded by Mrs. Sullivan to accept the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee. I will call the roll. Mayor Sullivan's not with us. D'Agostino, yes. Ms. Asak?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Minicello?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan? Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. That motion carries unanimously as well. And then Aldo brought this up. My next item was going to be for us to schedule for this upcoming Tuesday evening, full meeting of the school committee to have a a discussion. To have a discussion on, you know, whether or not to move forward with this acquisition. And then pending that discussion, potentially take a formal vote on that matter. Would everybody be available? Is everybody available this coming Tuesday evening? I believe that would be the sixteenth. I was thinking, we only have one item. If we wanted to, I mean, we could do it later or if everybody's amenable to it, we could do an earlier meeting, say five-thirty.
I can't do five-thirty. I would have to do after six.
Good. All right. After, could you do six or is that still too early? Would you need to do six-thirty?
Can we do like six-fifteen?
I think we can. Does anybody else have any conflict with scheduling or can, can everybody else meet for six-fifteen on Tuesday?
Um, Mr. D, I'm, I have to attend Zoom City Council next. I've been invited next Tuesday, I believe. I'll double check with the mayor. It's about, it's just about, I know the city is looking to put some money into youth programming in their upcoming budget. So they just wanted to ask me some questions about, you know, different programs. But are those meetings starting at six now or seven? I can't remember.
Seven.
They're starting, they're at, starting at seven?
They have been. I'm not sure if they changed.
Okay, yeah. So if, if they start at seven, I have no problem. I'll be there at six fifteen. I'll be with you at six fifteen.
All right.
For some reason I'm not. I mean, Aldo obviously can cover whatever you need from.
Great. All right. If, yeah, I mean, if you can be there, great. If, if not, then, you know, we'll, we'll, you will be missed, of course, but we'll be able to, we'll proceed. And so, okay. All right. So six fifteen, going once. Going twice. Any objections? Three times. All right, six fifteen it is this coming Tuesday, the sixteenth.
Go to the man with the spiral staircase behind him.
I'm not allowed up there right now.
I haven't seen one of those. It's God, we had an apartment in the eighties. The last time I saw that. All right. Is there any other unfinished business to come before the committee this evening? Anything else? All right. Do we have any, do we have any new business? What happens in these long meetings? We all start to lose it in the end. Mr. Minicello, you have a new business item.
Well, just an item to discuss very briefly. We, you know, we're making a lot of accommodations, obviously, for the students that are involved with sports. Have we had any thought to, you know, the students involved with, you know, band and choir and, and drama, you know, and those type of activities? In terms of, you know, making some sort of accommodation for those, for those students, because it seems like, you know, everything's focused on the sports right now, which is great. And, you know, I'm all in favor of, but there's a lot of other students that are interested in different things that seem to be, you know, missing out all year long. If, if there's something we can do to, you know, to involve them in some type of a smaller program or something, you know, spaced out or what have you. I mean, I think, I think they deserve consideration as well, you know.
Yeah, so I'll have Mr. Hogan, Mike Smith, Director of Music, and Matt Cunningham. They, they did run programs in the fall outside. I actually visited them a couple of times for students that were either singing. Obviously, we're not, we weren't allowed to play instruments. So we will obviously do something in the spring when we're back, but I can have them come to our next, we can do the next school committee meeting and just talk about what they have done. And I know they've done a ton of virtual, you know, band, the concerts, the, the, the winter concert, the, the holiday concert and, but we'll also have them come and talk about what they did in the fall. Um, the holiday concert and but we'll also have them come and talk about what they did in the fall. And um they did that outside and what they're going to do in the spring. So I can have all three of them. Uh, Mr. Hogan, obviously is with um, you know, the head of the drama program. Uh, Mr. Cunningham is obviously Matt Cunningham is the head of a chorus and uh Michael Smith is our new department head of music. Um, so they can come in and and present to the committee uh what they did in the fall and their plans for the spring as well.
Well, I guess we also follow up date because I mean, it seems to me that if we're having kids, you know, banging up against each other, playing soccer and football and basketball. I I don't understand the um, I guess um. The difference in terms of, you know, kids, you know, um, being close to each other or or not, or at least being safely spaced uh away from each other, you know. In a proper distance, you know, in a choir or something, I mean.
Yeah, and they did, Mr. Metro, they did do that in the in the in the fall. They did, it was, it had to be outside because singing had to be outside and. Without being in school, we didn't allow anybody in in the fall, so it's definitely was, we definitely did it outside in the fall and we're definitely going to do it in the spring and. You know, I I obviously we want those kids to get as just as much as every other kid.
Right, I mean, you know, we have indoor sports now, right? I mean. So I I just think that we should be able to have some indoor activities that that are properly spaced and and maybe we should follow up with the state too in terms of guidelines. But um, whatever, it just seems like, um, you know, we have. Parents and students that are, you know, being able to participate, you know, in in their sort of. Um, area of interest and, you know, the other areas of interest um. Seem to be getting, um, I don't know, just sort of um excluded and and I just want to, you know, give some thought as to, you know, how to. Go about doing it safely, you know, under the conditions that we currently have, so just a suggestion.
Absolutely, I I I agree a hundred percent. I'll have them here. Um, actually, we can have them either, I think, when. Oh, and the when's our next? It's the first of March, correct? I mean, Linda's not with us. It's the first, the first meeting in March is the second, right?
Yes, I believe it is. Yeah.
So I'll have all three here just to go over what they're planning and what we can do and obviously that would be going back to school. Um, you know, they can obviously do things inside and um, we want those programs again.
Maybe things.
All the others.
What's that? They did in the fall too, because it's not like they there was nothing. There was, you know, something so they can kind of run through what they did in the fall and. What they've been doing and then obviously talk about um, you know, uh, spring opportunities as as well, so.
Yeah, I visited a couple of programs they ran in the fall outside with Mr. Hogan and Mr. Um, uh, Mr. Um Cunningham. Uh, they were doing it on the steps of um, of the um, the steps of the um. Um, fine arts, they they were running different, you know, there was dance, there was singing, there was um. You know, and this state in this in the fall was much more strict around instruments. Um, and I'm hoping again, we'll have the and I'll get those updated guidance. I'll get that out to you as well. Um, the updated guidance from the Department of Ed, they're starting to loosen those up. Uh, they were very strict with instrument playing in the um, in the fall. Um, but again, I can, they'll, they can go over everything they did in the um. Uh, in the fall and then what their plans are for and what they did, obviously with the virtual. Uh, program that they did, but also our plans for um. I think it's important for us to try to have, if allowed, try to have some kind of a musical. Um, obviously not at the scale that we had, you know, this this would be the second year that we wouldn't have a musical because of, obviously, last year COVID first hit, so. You know. For having these programs, if, you know, again, it's going to, they're going to look different and. You know, it's just going to, obviously, you can't have a full house, but we're going to try to do, you know. And I, again, I'll have Mr. Hogan, I they spend a lot of time. I'll I'll have all three of them come to our our March second meeting.
Superintendent, you know, I just had a thought on that. And and again, everything always with COVID is always different than what we're used to, but. Even if we couldn't do that indoors in the auditorium, you mentioned that. The students, the drama students dance, you know, they were on the steps of fine arts. You know, I don't know if there's some way we could do it drive up style in your car or I I don't know how.
We might be able to do it in the stadium. We'll definitely.
There you go.
Might be able to do a performance in the stadium and and um it's outside and obviously the the musical is in. Um, it's in the, it's in May, so whatever we can do to make sure that. We try to get back to as close to normal as possible to allow these these things to happen. Um. We want to try to do as many events as we can safely in 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 the spring and Mr. Minicello brings up a good point. Deserve to to get just as much as. You know, and now that we're coming back to school, um, you know.
Right.
Have every, every um. You know, every, every effort to make sure that we have these programs for them after school outside. And as we move towards the warmer weather, we can even expand them more.
Right, yeah, no, and and I think it'd be a nice thing for the community too if. If it was outdoors and there was some way that, you know, I mean, again, we'd have limited capacity, obviously, which would we'd have to figure out how to work that, but. You know, if the community could be able to, whoever wants to and is comfortable, see a performance. You know, that we're used to. I mean, again, the the distancing would be an issue, but well, we could at least. Have a conversation about it or even if they're performing and it's televised for the community to watch on YouTube. I mean, some something, you know, I think it'd be.
Yeah, and also, um, I was reminded uh during in um. Michael Smith, uh, a new director of music has uh with Aldo's help, he's purchased uh in his purchasing uh special masks. For singing. Uh, he's purchasing P P E that is made for instruments, um, so students can safely play those and not. You know, um, you know, obviously, when you're um using the the flute and uh the saxophone and and obviously you're. You know, you're blowing into those, but we're going to, we're purchasing P P E so students can safely play them. Um, and again, we'll follow the state guidelines, which are loosening up a little bit. They were not loose at all in the fall. Um, and and through the winter, obviously, for instruments inside, but. Um, we are going to buy whatever we can to make sure students have the opportunity to uh take part in in chorus, band. Um, drama, um, you know, uh, these these programs are second to none. And we have every intention of running these when we get back to school.
Great, great. All right, any other new business items for this evening? Mr. Sullivan?
One real, uh, two real quick, Mike. The uh, the John and Abigail scholarships. I had a couple of people ask if the photos could be used from the uh yearbook and put up on the sign on Belmont Street.
Yep, Jessica will um, will work on that to make sure that we were able to get. Um, the pitches up. We'll figure out how we can put that together. Um. We'll try. I mean, if not, we can run, run the student now. We can run the students pitches on the digitals and on the digital board, so they. They switch every three to five seconds, so the students' graduation pitcher can just scroll through. Um, on the digital board, because it it might be difficult to do the old, you know, the plaster board on the the kind of. Cut and paste all those pitches together, but we'll try. We'll ask, we'll ask the company, that's why. Yeah, absolutely. We'll definitely ask the company. Um, and, you know, hopefully one day we'll have that as a digital board and it'll be much easier to. To display things, the the large board on Belmont Street. So I know Aldo's been working on that and continues to do so, but we will definitely try.
They were asking because they missed so much this year.
Of course. Yep.
And the other one is uh on the school calendar. That we we voted on tonight. Is that your new logo you're working on?
No, that's um, I don't know that. I don't know where that's an old one. So no, I, the new logo will be in your packet this Friday.
Okay.
The proposed new logo.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Any other new business? Okay, so the next agenda item is executive session. The committee is going into executive session this evening. Um, the the committee will enter executive session pursuant to M G L Chapter thirty A. Section twenty-one A three for the purpose of conducting strategy with respect to collective bargaining. As conducting this deliberation in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session following the executive session. So I need a motion from a member of the committee to enter executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Sullivan, seconded by Mrs. Sullivan to enter executive session. I'll call the roll. Uh, Mayor's not with us. Uh, D'Agostino, yes. Ms. Asak?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Minicello?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, the committee is now in executive session.